I just got your email this morning. It said you were after me, so I confused it.
I know, right? That's what happens when you forget your address.
Okay, it is Tuesday, September 1st, 2020. We'll call Amin to order. Please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Born and unborn.
Okay, minutes or reports received in five.
We have the 2020 House of Representatives to get sale.
Okay. Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
You have to go on Street Ribbon Bridge Cutting Carol Moore.
Yep.
I'm not saying anything. If you want to, you can. And then the public meeting for the Business 50 West project is tomorrow at four. I think they're gonna start up Cole County Communities Meeting again. That's tomorrow, or Thursday, I'm sorry.
No, I think. It's next. Next week.
I'm gonna go both weeks.
We just gotta be back here by eight.
My phone has COVID. Okay, we'll be back here Thursday at eight. Okay.
There's a Slute America meeting tomorrow at 11:30.
I will speak at Dunklin Street. And then tomorrow is the 75th anniversary of the Japanese surrender on the USS Missouri. So remember that. Thursday, we've got our meeting at eight. Sunday, Trinity Lutheran in Russellville has their 125th anniversary. So one of us will go out and present a proclamation. And then the Patriots Day First Responders Dinner is at American Legion. So you guys go out there. Okay. Let's just keep moving right along. Bids and contracts. Bid award 2020-24 Food Service Program.
For 2020-24 Food Service Program, we had three vendors bid on it. Our recommendation is Trinity Services Group. As you can see from the bid tab, they are the lowest at $327,506. And the Sheriff's Department is happy with their work in the past. Do you guys need to see the bid tab?
Got it here. I move that we award Food Service Program to Trinity Services.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then we're gonna jump around since we're here. But we'll do the approval and signing of supplemental agreements for small community cooperating projects, Wardsville and Russellville.
Okay, we have two supplemental agreements on the agenda. And before I get into them, I just wanted to say something about the cooperative projects that we did with the small communities. We did five. Three are either done or under construction right now. The two remaining are Russellville and Wardsville. And this program was implemented in the current sales tax for the first time to give these small communities an opportunity to do a project that they wouldn't be able to get funding otherwise for. And so it's been very successful. And Jan Wyatt from Russellville and Bill Gratz and Shirley Stockman from Wardsville are here in support of these two projects that they have. The Russellville project, it's on Marion Street. And their grant was in the amount of 22, or $220,000 from the county. And they took that money and applied for a CDBG grant through the state of Missouri, Department of Economic Development, and received that for $500,000. So because of that, and the timing, and the additional scope and size of the project, they needed additional time to do that project. And so this agreement with them is to extend the timeframe another 12 months. So that's that project there. And then in Wardsville, their project originally was awarded $75,000 to do a study of the intersection of Routes B, M, and W, which is kind of an odd intersection in town. Due to some project changes with that, and the fact that MoDOT didn't have any money to put towards it, not sure when that would ever happen. It just wasn't feasible at this time to do a study and have it set on the shelf for maybe 10, 15 years before any money would become available, and then the study's outdated. So just working with Wardsville, they decided that they wanted to pursue a different project. And we agreed. And their project is now to do school safety signing and lights in four different locations in the community. And so their project is to, or their supplemental agreement is to change the project to that from the study at Routes M, B, and W, and then extend it 12 months to give them time to complete that. So we have the two supplemental agreements, as I stated, and I'd recommend approval of both of those. And what, I mean, I think we'd allow Jan or Bill or Shirley to say anything if you'd like in support of the project.
Thank you so much for the opportunities.
City of Russellville so appreciates the generous grant that you've awarded us. We can do, we plan on doing a small project, and this will help the whole neighborhood and several other places in town get improvements on street and storm drainage, which is a real issue in town. And if we don't fix the storm drainage, our streets will just deteriorate further. So we appreciate that. On another note, I'm gonna have to leave, get back to City Hall. We are in full support of the half-cent sales tax. I provided a list of projects that we've completed during the last four years. I got, I was hired in 2016, and we've done probably $150,000, $160,000 worth of work, leveraging your money with our tax money in town. So we've made a, we've made a lot of work, a lot of improvements in town. The community has been very receptive. So we do appreciate that, and we support your efforts in our new sales tax issue. So just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
First, I'd like to say thank you to the commission for giving the communities back part of the half-cent sales tax money. Because in Wardsville, obviously, we're the largest growing bedroom community, and we're the only community without a sales tax, a property tax. We tried to get a property tax passed about four years ago, and it went, everybody's anti-tax. So the only source of revenue we have is state license fee for when you buy a new vehicle, a little franchise tax, and a little sales tax. So without this part of the half-cent sales tax money that Wardsville gets, we'd be in trouble. And down the road, when all the streets have to be overlaid like in Deer Haven, we're gonna be in trouble. And the only way that's ever gonna happen is for a neighborhood tax improvement district. So just wanted to say thank you for the money we're getting, and hope we continue to receive it. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your support when we do start the next campaign for our five-year sales tax.
Good?
Yep.
I move that we approve and sign the supplemental agreements for small community cooperative projects for Russellville and Wardsville.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, we will go back to approval and signing of JCMG contracts for Show Me Healthy Women program.
Good morning. I think Jill has the contracts. These are just, you know, we get a contract from DHS for the Show Me Healthy Women program, and then JCMG will do like the mammograms and things that we can't do in our office at a discounted rate. So we just reimburse them for those services. And there's actually two contracts. One is like JCMG proper, and one is the Surgery Center.
Good?
Yeah.
I move that we sign the independent contractor agreement with Jefferson City Medical Group and Jeff's JCMG Ancillary Services LLC.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of 2020-SS14 Soul Source for Zoll Medical.
This is just the approval of the Soul Source form for Zoll Medical. It's for the maintenance agreement on the cardiac monitors. For five years, it was totaling $24,378.
Maybe that we approve and sign the Soul Source for Zoll Medical.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, do we have any unfinished business? Okay, new business. Council's payable review? Okay.
I move that we approve accounts payable pending review.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're gonna jump around again. Discussion of future of five-year sales tax renewal, Mr. Bates, Mr. Schwartz.
You want me to do it?
Yeah.
Yeah, you talk less than Mike.
That's what I was told. Good morning, Commissioners. It's hard to believe it's been five years since we've been here to kick this off again. But we're here today because it is getting time to start the process of getting a committee together to look at a campaign for the renewing the half-cent capital improvement sales tax for the county. So that's why I'm here. Myself, Lori Helsher, and Brad Bates did this the last time. And we're here to offer our services again to you all to run the campaign one more time.
Right, thank you. I appreciate it.
Sounds good.
Just one or two more, three more.
One.
Definitely get you down for more while we're at it.
If you're okay with that, we will need your help in this. And I'm gonna give you a brochure that we used the last time.
Thanks, sir.
That
Thanks, Roger.
Shows the, your new public works director is working to update this, and we'll need your help on this as well. There's some highlighted things on there that we need you to work with the City of Jefferson on a list of cooperative projects. And hopefully, we can have that approved for the campaign. And also the, any facilities improvements that are gonna be done in the county, if you all could figure out between now and kind of the end of the year, what those might be, why. That would be very helpful also, so that we can share that with voters as to what might be done in the next five years.
Appreciate your help.
Do you have anything, Mr. Bates, sir, that you would like to?
Not at this time.
Thank you very much. Seriously, it's, I appreciate you stepping forward, and we'll come up with a good list of things to do. You're welcome to stay. Listen to all of our other pearls of wisdom, or you can get the heck out of here.
I appreciate the dismissal.
See ya. Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Roger.
Okay, second and final reading of Budget Adjustment Number 17.
This is for $71,150 for the health department grant. This is for the epidemiologist and lab. And I do need a signature to that approval.
Move that we sign court order number 17.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of Care Act, Care Act application requests.
So I think you guys have a list there in front of you. Again, we'll approve those individually. The first one is a device charging cabinet with sanitizer, total amount $2,230.
So I had a couple of questions here before we get started.
Okay.
So obviously, these have gone through the process of going to BKD, and then they put them forward, and then the committee is voting on these to approve or deny. Is that correct?
It's not really voting to approve or deny. We're just kind of making sure there aren't any additional questions internally before they move forward. There's not really, it's that the working group has discussed them as well, and they're moving them forward to you to make a decision. There's no decision from the working group other than to push them to you.
Kind of going on your guidance as far as what you said before, as far as the school limits, how we're gonna do the schools. And then there are some internal requests. Some of them had already been approved by you guys, so.
Okay. All right, you guys good? Move that we approve C-05-02.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next one's eight portable radios, and they're not really portable radios. They're more like a handheld to communicate back and forth, to help with social distancing. $2,520.
Good. I move that we approve C-07-01.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next one's seven non-contact infrared thermometers for $980.
Good?
Yeah.
I move that we approve C-07-01.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next is additional
Hang on, hang on. So those are, those are the exact same numbers. There's three of them there.
So it Yes. The application got broken down into different parts because we have to report it as separate things.
Okay. Seems a little odd.
If you want to, we can take them as a group for the application number.
It doesn't matter to me. It just seems like if you're approving that, you're approving all of them.
Okay. I mean, we can
Are you guys good with that, or, I mean, we
These are all internal stuff, right?
No, this is all schools.
Schools, yeah.
I mean
They do it all together.
Okay. So the two other ones on that same agreement is cleaning supplies for $292, and then a 16-device charging cabinet for $1,600.
Yeah, I'm good with all that. You guys too?
Yes.
Good.
So then the next two go together. 15 handheld radios and 15 non-contact infrared body thermometers. It's $4,725 for the radios and $2,025 for the thermometers.
You guys good?
Yeah.
I move that we approve C-12-01.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next two is acrylic table dividers for $6,600, and two thermographic cameras for $15,158.
I have a conflict here.
Make motion to approve C-13-01.
Aye, second. All in favor?
Aye. Abstain.
The next two are internal applications. You guys have talked about these already. They're kind of out of order, but we're gonna talk about one at a time. The first one's mounting brackets for the telemedicine cardiac monitors for $7,107.
Good? Move that we approve D-03-01.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then the next one is the 17 cardiac monitors, defibrillators with telemedicine link for $390,604.
Good? Move that we approve D-03-02.
All in favor?
Aye.
The final one on the sheet here is the Chevrolet Tahoe and emergency lighting. It is the recommendation of BKD at the moment not to approve this. They're having a hard time tying out the necessity of the purchase to the public health emergency. So at this point, they want to deny that application.
Okay.
Or no action.
Yeah.
Well, they said that they would have to reapply or something to change. So I think we would deny this one, and then if they want, they can reapply. That's just how they want it to be.
So I guess it wouldn't be any different than Jamestown School or somebody else that we denied, and they could reapply later.
But if they're still looking into it. So they're saying right now, it's denied. It doesn't meet requirements.
Right.
So then it really shouldn't even be here.
Well, so we're bringing them to you one way or the other to put a stamp on it, approved or denied. So we have the documentation.
Right. But I mean, if it doesn't meet the criteria for CARES funding, then it shouldn't even be to us. Is that, that's kind of what you said though, too, right?
They applied. So anybody that applied, we're gonna bring it back to you.
We're gonna get a whole list of denied that we could actually
Yeah, see
override the denial if we want our
I mean, if you have additional questions
If we override the denial, though, if they say it doesn't meet the criteria for CARES funding, and we override it, that means that we're paying for it, not CARES funding.
Yeah, yeah.
So this is an application for CARES funding. So they, we hired them to say, yes, it meets criteria, or no, it meets criteria. And if they said, no, this doesn't meet criteria, it should never come to us. That's just the way I see it, but I mean
I mean, you can also take the chance to go ahead and do it. Doesn't mean that we owe that money back. How like the Jamestown
Well, I think in this circumstance, you would be paying for it from other funding since it isn't internal. But if you had an external person that came in, applied, we still want that denial, so we could go back to them and say, I'm sorry, your application has been denied.
I mean, in the case of the Jamestown School, they had a different argument because there was kids from Cole County that go to Jamestown School. So we could have approved that. So it met, could have met criteria based on students from Cole County. So I could see why that would be up to us. But it's either, I don't know, maybe I'm just making a bigger deal out of it than it should be. So, I mean, I wouldn't think we're gonna approve or deny every application that comes through there.
No, but I mean, we
Yes.
Yeah, that, yeah.
What, then what are they doing? I mean
They're making the recommendation to
To deny it. But we have the final say. The commission has the final say. So they're gonna, they're gonna bring all the requests to us, and it is up to us to approve or deny.
No, but it should be kicked out before it even gets to approve or deny because it does not meet criteria.
Yeah, that's where I'm at.
Shouldn't even come to approving or denying. We're not denying it. I'm just saying it doesn't meet criteria at this time. Actually, they're saying it. So
Yeah, I mean, I think of it, if they get it and it doesn't meet criteria for CARES funding, sorry. It automatically gets kicked out. I mean
That's what they want to do. I don't care. We can deny it for now under the terms that it did not meet qualifications and
We would prefer to have on record the approval or denial for every application.
Well, we could very easily get phone calls from somebody, we denied that we didn't even see the application. So then we're gonna say, I don't know anything about it. And they're gonna say, well, you're the ones that denied it. And I'll say, well, no, BKD, and, you know, but it's
I mean, really, I don't think that BKD has the authority to deny something for you. That's why they're bringing it to you. Their recommendation is this doesn't qualify. We need you to deny it. I think all of those decisions have to go through you.
Whether you wanna make them a blind or not blind is
Yeah. Yeah.
So anytime you apply for other grants, I'm sure that they send you something back that says, I'm sorry, this doesn't qualify. I mean, so in my opinion, this doesn't qualify. It's not a denial. This does not qualify for CARES funding. That's what they're telling us at this time. Right?
Yes.
I mean, that's the way I'd prefer to, I'd prefer them to kick it out and say, I'm sorry, it doesn't qualify. And we sent them a letter.
Do you still wanna see the ones that were denied, so you know?
I mean, it's a blind application, so why? I mean, if it doesn't qualify, they're basically asking the county to fund it. I mean, we got a big pot of money that everybody and their brother be asking us for money then.
Oh, they will, they are.
Well, I get it, yeah.
They are.
But I mean, we're just getting started. I mean, so how many, how many of these we wanna go through? I mean, we're gonna spend hours going through this stuff.
But isn't the reverse, and I'm being double laughing, but isn't the reverse true then? If you're giving them the authority to say no, then if they recommend yes, then that doesn't need to come through y'all. They can just make that decision.
No, they're, they're not saying yes or no. They're just following criteria that says it qualifies or it doesn't qualify. I mean, so it qualifies for CARES funding or doesn't qualify? That's all that they're saying. They've gone through the process and qualifies or it doesn't for CARES funding. I mean, they're not saying to approve or deny. They're just saying it qualifies. And then we can decide whether we accept it or deny it, or even at that level, but I mean, I'm just talking. I'm making it too complicated. We can move on. What do you think, Jeff?
Long fence.
Well, get off.
We have prior denied ones that qualify, so, or in there.
Just deny it because it's not qualified in their eyes, so let's keep it moving.
Yeah.
All right. I move that we deny the D-03-10 because it does not qualify.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Didn't have too much caffeine this morning. Could've been here all day.
Approval of CARES Act signing
Be here all day Thursday.
Subrecipient agreement?
Maybe some we talk about that as well. Cause we've been talking about a lot of other stuff with it. So we wanna do that.
Purchasing of garage store parts.
So, I mean, I got the quotes here. I don't know if you have me to bring them to you or not. The That would've been on Facebook. I would've helped you out, but it would've been on Facebook. But anyway, so we had, we've had some damage to our Sallyport doors a couple times now. And we're having to wait for the parts for the slats. So what we'd like to do is we'd like to get some of the slats, I think it's 25 for the exit door and 20 for the entrance door, and have them on hand so that if something occurs, then we can replace them faster so our Sallyport doors aren't down for very long. Truthfully, I'm, I think we'd have to do probably a Soul Source. And the reason I say that is, is because when we, they were damaged before, it was an emergency purchase. But this is a $13,000, a little over $13,000. So I don't know if we could just buy these slats outright because it's, I mean, we gotta have them for those doors. They're specific to the doors. But I don't know if we have to do Soul Source on that or not. But I would like to go ahead and, if that's what we need to do, I'd like to do Soul Source on these and get that, is that right, Joe? Yeah. So I'd like to go ahead and do Soul Source on these and get these on hand and have them stored in my facility. Right now, the factory is only working half-days because of COVID. And it's, so it's gonna take longer to get the slats to us if something occurs again. Hopefully, it won't, but we all know that's not true.
Yeah, I can remember when the FedEx truck did it.
I'd rather not talk about any of those instances, let me tell you truth. My stomach will get upset.
Yeah, I'm fine. Kind of puts you out of operation when you have both of them down
Yeah, we were shut down.
At the same time.
And even with one of them shut down for extended period of time, it's difficult because people have to go in and turn around. So we have to, like, when that happens, we have to have the ambulance parked outside. So we'd be just better off if we had these on hand. It'd be a quicker fix, quicker turnaround.
I think you've scared them because I saw a truck unloading
They're not allowed
In the alley, in the alley
The trailers are not allowed
Unloading outside the door, yeah.
Nothing like closing the door when the, after the cows have left. But yeah, they're not allowed in a Sallyport anymore.
I move that we run the Soul Source advertisement for the garage store parts.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, jailer salary increase discussion.
So we have an issue with jailers again. I have I have fifty-four people in the jail division, and I'm down fifteen right now. So what I did was, I printed a, our org chart without names, except for Tim Harland. Because I really actually thought that was funny, no, I actually forgot about his name on there. But you can see that the jailers were having a hard time with their current salary is thirty-two-five, and I'd like to raise it up to thirty-five thousand. That would cost us. Let me find it. It's gonna cost fourteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars for us to do it this year. Currently, because of our surplus, I have ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars in surplus in the salary line, so I could do it revenue neutral this year, and then next year, we would adjust our budget appropriately. I, you know, I'm, I'm down twenty-six, or I'm down twenty-six percent, I gotta do something about retaining the seventy-four percent. If by chance, I'm able to steal other employees doing so, I'm okay with that too. But I would rather keep the ones that I have and then work off of that. Have any questions?
What was the total cost of that, I'll be done with it.
Fourteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-four cents. I have a spreadsheet on it, but their names are on it, so I'm hesitant to, I don't wanna put it out in the public.
Well, we talked about it a little bit the other day, so I got an idea of what's going on, I was just writing down numbers and trying to confuse myself with nothing else.
That's kinda like what we did with, with EMS, whether, whether raising those salaries or not. We, we've got five paramedics now that we didn't have before, so it's kinda the same.
Yeah, we eliminated a position at EMS, though.
Well, I guess we can get rid, Aaron?
No, no, I need him. No, no.
Would they forego any raises coming January first then, if there is no raise?
Yes, I'd be willing to take the merit and cost of living off the table for the jailers, for these individuals getting the raises.
Trying to sweeten the pot a little bit.
I understand, I mean, we, we gotta do something that's getting, if we lose any more people, it's gonna start getting dangerous, and then they're already on twelve-hour shifts, so I can't do, I can't increase the staffing level there anymore, unless I move people around from Patrol Division or Civil or something like that, and, and we can't afford it on that side either. The good thing about the bond reform that came out of it was that the people I have in custody right now are bad people. And because I have that many bad people in one place, it makes it more dangerous for my staff, especially when you get low vacancies, and then you get, even when you get the new people in, then there's a problem with having experience, and we still have to train these people once, once we get them, so.
Are you asking for any new ones in twenty, twenty-one budget?
I am not.
Not yet?
Not yet. I'm hoping, I truly hope this will fix it. Cause this, this is, doing the pay raises is cheaper than adding, adding staff, and it truthfully is. If, if I can't keep the staff I need now, I don't know if increasing my saying, I'm gonna hire two more people is gonna do any good, if I can't get what I have filled up.
You know, I'm the yes, I, I was, I was Jeff for a while going no on everything, but I'm.
Where are you at, honey?
It's a.
I'd rather do it at budget time, I'll tell you truth on that, but having, we got these positions open, and so it's. And Debbie and Krista are gonna hate us, having to do all this later in the year.
Yeah, it's just a slippery slope, I mean, you can't hire them if you aren't paying them, and you, I mean, you may not even be able to hire them at that, I don't know. Just limited number of people out there, I mean.
Well, truthfully, if I can stop the bleeding, if I can prevent the seventy-four percent I got now from leaving, I mean, I lose, like I said, it's, that's a dangerous job down there, and, and I can't continually take people away to go, cause we're having to do medical transports, the courts now are having us take prisoners to different appointments, so it's, it pulls away from what we're trying to do.
Yeah, may not, may not cost you anything if you can't hire new ones.
Yeah.
Trying to retain what you got.
Yes.
I'm just blaming it on Matt for starting this. He's not here.
I actually will thank Matt when I see him, because I was wondering how I was gonna approach this with you guys in the first place. So he gave me an opening, so I'm not gonna lie.
I'm fine with it, I know it's, it's just those times right now, so.
Good. Move that we approve the jailer salary increases as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Body cams.
Pardon?
Body cams.
Body cams, yeah, while you're there, sole source ad approval for body cams?
So last year, you guys allowed us to change out our body cams into a, a better product, easier use. So we took our older ones and put them down in the jail. That's not working out so well, because the reason why we got rid of them out of Patrol Division, because they were defunct, they were going out of service. So we need to go ahead and make the jump to protect our staff again, and buy the extra body cams for everyone down in the jail. We're proposing is buying thirty-six of these body cameras for twenty-five thousand. It would not be a budget adjustment, we have it in biometrics to pay for it. However, since it's, it's, it was last year when we had, when you ordered the bid, we have to do a sole source for the body cams, and then after it runs a month, then we'd be able to purchase the, the new body cams for the staff down in jail.
How much were they?
Uh, they're six hundred and ninety-nine dollars each, and we're buying thirty-six, so the total cost would be about twenty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Did you email that to us, I'm sorry?
No, I didn't, I, I talked to you about it.
I remember talking about it, I was trying to find the information on it.
I move that we run the sole source ad for body cams.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
They're stepped out.
Our assessors stepped out.
That's it for me, do y'all need anything from me?
Nope, nope.
Thank you.
Oh, there it is, okay. Assessor to discuss Louis Reed and Alan invoices.
Morning, Chris.
Morning. Where are we at on those? Which ones are they?
I don't know, so, um, at the beginning of this year, I contacted the assessor's office and wanted them to reach out to Louis Allen and Ray, because we had a P O open for last year's contract. So Mary Ann sent an email to them requesting that they send any additional invoices that build us through twenty nineteen, and she did not get a response, so that P O was closed. We've now received invoices, I don't have a copy of them, I know that, uh, I had a page or two. We've now received invoices for last year and for this year. So I don't have an open P O for last year, but I think, it's not that we didn't incur the cost, it's that we need to pay it, but I think we need to make sure that we're paying the right percentage of that cost. So our original was twenty-three or twenty-six percent, I don't remember which one.
Twenty-three.
Yeah, we are now to thirty-five percent, we just wanna make sure that that's the correct percentage we should be paying, and that you guys are in agreement with that. And then I think we need an agreement for the twenty-twenty costs that we've incurred, because the previous agreement only covered twenty nineteen.
So twenty nineteen, we were twenty-three?
The original agreement was twenty-three percent. I think in twenty nineteen, that percentage changed at least three times. And we never signed a new attachment to our contract, which referenced another agreement.
So did we have a contract in twenty nineteen?
Yes.
A signed contract?
Yes.
Do we have a signed contract for twenty?
For twenty-three percent.
Okay.
So we may have a contract for nineteen, but we sure don't have a contract for twenty.
No, no.
I contacted their office on January seventeenth, requesting a contract by email. I called in February, I called in March requesting contracts, never heard anything back. Finally, we had B O E, and I contacted them after that, and I said, Jennifer, I still don't have a contract. She sent a contract, but it did not include the percentage in there, and I said, you, I can't, that's not acceptable, I have to have one that includes the percentage. They never did send one.
So what did they do for us this year?
I think it was just a remand on the twenty thirteen case that had to go back to the tax commission, so it would've been basically just presenting that. I assume it was just a filing, I don't know that there was an actual hearing, because I was never notified of a hearing. So I think that they just filed paperwork for the hearing officer to review.
And how much do they want us to pay for that?
I, I don't know what the billing amount is on that. I did have a seat.
They would've had to brief it to the state tax commission, because the original opinion was from a hearing officer, but then it goes to the state tax commission itself, or the official opinion from that, from the commission.
The commission originally signed off on the first remand, or the first hearing, and then I believe the appellate judge said to send it back to the tax commission for a hearing officer review. And Maureen Monahan reviewed it as the hearing officer, and we got that decision. And my understanding is that the tax commissioner signed off on that decision, which was still against us. But they did not provide any contract for twenty twenty until July, and then it did not meet the criteria needed. I informed them that I needed to have the correct criteria on a contract before I could present it.
I'd pay the twenty nineteen, but I'm not gonna.
I wouldn't pay any of it.
Well, I.
Well, we would owe at least a portion of the twenty nineteen, based on the percentage that we were at.
We reached out to them, asked them for bills for twenty nineteen, and they're just now getting them to us? I mean, you know? When you gotta call somebody to send you a bill, I mean, that's kind of a problem. And now that you get them, and it's August of twenty twenty for nineteen? And the bills are wrong, I mean, they haven't done anything for us.
No.
Not that even, we even asked them to do anything for us.
Well, the billing would stay what they did, because it's billed by the hour, so there would be that detail in the bill.
I mean, I think there's statute of limitations on how, how long you can take to actually bill somebody for services rendered.
So we did have sixty thousand, four oh six eighty-three that we liquidated in the P O, I'm not sure that was on spin.
They've always had a problem getting bills to us, I mean, from the very beginning, their bills have been late.
It's not very good business for people.
Not quite this late, but they've been late.
They don't leave them alone.
And for the, the twenty twenty amounts, I wasn't notified of the number of counties that we're in until July ninth, and.
Of this year.
Of this year, yeah.
So twenty nineteen, I would argue that we owed the twenty-three percent, but if we didn't sign some kind of amendment to the contract, they can't ask us for more than that.
And I think that was the emails that went back and forth earlier last year.
Well, Chris got an email from them in May of twenty nineteen with the new percentage, at that time, which is what, twenty-six percent? And then you sent, forwarded that email to Debbie and me at the end of July, saying you missed it because you've been out of the office or whatever, and hadn't gone through your emails, which was fine, but then it wasn't brought to the commission to be signed. And then there were two subsequent increases, and there was a memo sent from Louis Reed and Alan to all the assessors, and John Ruth got it too, that set out who's still, which counties are still participating, and what the new percentages for each were. But you didn't do, you didn't, nobody followed up to get a revised agreement or anything.
That was July ninth of twenty twenty, that we got that list of the two different, the June, and then the July time, and I had already requested a contract at that time.
But you didn't follow up to get it.
I can't make them draw up a contract, all I can do is contact them and say, we need this. And I've got the emails where I say, we need the contract, we have to have a contract, and it has to have the correct percentage on it. Otherwise, we can't pay the bills.
Well, I mean, we still operate on the twenty-three percent, because we do have a contract for twenty-three percent.
That would be my understanding.
How much is it? Does anybody know?
I don't know for sure, but I was thinking something like six thousand, but don't quote me on that, because I'm not positive about that.
So that's the twenty nineteen.
That is my understanding.
Can we get the bills and talk about it Thursday, or next week, or figure something out? So we can see what we're actually talking about?
Yeah, it's kinda hard to approve paying a bill, we don't know, yeah.
Would the, the eighth work, because we're gonna be up here anyway?
It's next Tuesday, that's fine.
CARES admissions?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. I'll bring copies of the bills, yes.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
I still don't have anything for twenty.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't pay twenty.
I have a contract dated July twenty-seventh, but it doesn't have any percentage in there at all.
But it hasn't been signed.
No, it hasn't been signed, I didn't send it to you, because it did not have the percentage that we were supposed to pay in it.
Does it still reference the other comment?
Actually, honestly, not sure. Been a while since I've looked at it.
Are those people out there, Jeff, Lock and Dam, too? Maybe we'll do them next. Save Christie till the end.
Yeah, so it references in here, the percentage will be determined by a mutual agreement of all assessor.
Is that okay? Okay.
So this agreement references that mutual agreement between the assessors involved in the joint defense. So that's how the, the contracts have been written in the past, it references that separate agreement. And we've never signed a different mutual agreement besides the original twenty-three percent.
Right.
In, in twenty nineteen.
So it does reference that, it's still a twenty-two percent.
Okay. Yeah. We'll see you next week.
Sounds good.
Thanks, Chris.
I'll bring those bills over.
Okay, we're gonna deviate again, and we're gonna go to the eight-nine-one-two Lock and Dam discussion.
I told them that it wouldn't be till ten o'clock, cause I saw we had.
Oh, well, do you wanna?
So, I'm just going to do the hospital thing.
Oh, okay, well, go ahead, okay. Never mind, discussion of hospital tests.
While y'all are talking about it.
Christie. Got me all confused.
I think this is just a follow-up from the.
I think this is just a follow-up from the discussion that we had last week. I did, you know, get a little bit more information from Boone Hospital, I sent it to you. Crystal Sullivan and I, Dr. Sullivan talked yesterday about some ideas she has. I think she plans to submit an application individually from the, the health center, not associated with the hospitals. But I, it was just a follow-up from last week, if you had any further discussion or decision about testing.
I thought, I liked Boone Hospital's proposal, I mean, that was.
Crystal's gonna put something together.
She has a, I guess she talked to another health center that has sort of like a trailer that they can use to ta, to do testing instead of bringing people inside their building. And you could also use it later to do vaccinations. So if we need to do mass vaccinations of the whole community, we could partner with them. So it could be used for testing or vaccinations.
I mean, obviously, some logistics, you know, hospitals continuing to do their own and, you know, making certain people pay to, to have the test done and if they're referred by a dentist or whomever. But, I mean, I think if we can get all that worked out, maybe a possibility.
Or to just keep it, have the hospitals keep doing it separately? Or you want Boone, you would be entertained Boone?
Well, I guess that would, that would be up to them if they're willing to pay for their patients to, to be tested.
Oh, if we said.
Yeah.
And, and the other option is just to keep the hospitals doing their own and have them apply for CARES money for the underinsured or the uninsured and just keep it separately. I mean, we have a lot of different options there. And if you want, I could lay those out and, and send them to you. I don't think we're looking for a decision to be made today unless you wanted to make one.
No, we just need to kind of keep moving ahead. You know, we're getting letters to the editor saying we're not doing anything, it's kind of like.
Got one letter, Sam.
I know, I just.
Was it specifically about testing?
I'm sorry.
Was it specifically about testing?
Yeah.
It's up to you, if you, if you want me to get any more, if you have more questions for Boone or if you want the individuals to, the individual hospitals to apply for CARES money for the uninsured.
We could kind of do both, couldn't we?
Well, if you set up Boone and they were willing to bill the care, you know, the county for the uninsured, then the hospitals, I suspect, would stop doing it.
Okay.
Unless they were getting CARES money as well. Because I know it is a burden on them.
I mean, I think just, you gotta look at how much money you're gonna have. And I mean, that, you know, they were doing two hundred tests a day. I mean, just looking at the Boone, you know, it starts adding up pretty fast and.
And they would bill everyone that had insurance.
Right.
Yeah, but only the uninsured.
What we don't know is, yeah, how many are uninsured or not paying for it? And what's that number look like, you know, is that three hundred a week, you know, at a hundred and fifty bucks? And then you're paying their hourly wages, I mean, you know, you start getting into fifty thousand a week pretty quick.
Right, it can be a lot of money.
And, so.
But that's what the CARES money is for, so.
So how many are they testing right now, per day? What hospital say, about a hundred and fifty?
Caprision said, yeah, between a hundred and forty, a hundred and seventy a day.
With eight people? And Boone's gonna come down here and do it with two people and do two hundred per day?
That's what, that's what they said.
So the math somewhere not adding up, I'm not figuring that out. I'm not opposed to doing something to lighten the load for them, just some of the stuff not making sense there. So. I'd, if she can throw a proposal together, we definitely want to take a look at it.
Crystal?
Crystal, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, she was.
Crystal's with Boone, right? I got the names.
No, Crystal's with the community health center here in Josh.
She's with the community health center, okay.
And.
I don't care if they both throw up.
Yeah, she wants to take care of her patients, you know, right now she relies on the hospitals to do the testing. They do a little rapid testing in-house when they have the supplies, but I think she's looking at something more long-term for her patients.
We don't necessarily do it with her, she can still apply for the CARES money.
Yeah, hers is, is separate.
And again, the CARES money is, is, the end of December, it's gone.
Right.
So, so, you know, we could still have.
You don't want to spend it all right now?
No, but we could, we could still have big numbers at the end of December and, I mean, it's, we're done.
And that's where something like Crystal gets, you know, she applies for this trailer or unit, you know, she can continue to use it even after the CARES money is gone. It's, it's kind of more of a longer-term thing because they can use it for vaccinations. We could partner with her to do vaccination clinics too. So it, we chatted yesterday about it, it sounded like a really good idea. But I don't know what the volume of testing she'll be able to do through that, this, that unit is.
Maybe get some numbers.
Yeah, she's gonna submit a proposal through the CARES, um, application process.
I'd be okay with looking at proposals.
To, so do you want the hospitals to submit proposals as well?
Yeah, I mean, I think anybody could submit a proposal and we just take a look at it and.
Do we do that for phase two? Is that in phase two is testing? Okay, so they can do that now? Okay.
And somewhere down the road, we could maybe even have Boone Hospital come over and talk to us too.
Yeah, or would you like to set up a call with Drew? It's up to you. Or would you like him to just submit a proposal?
Have him submit a proposal and then we can always do a call.
Alright, I'll have.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
How about, how about, is nine fifty-seven close enough to ten, Jeff?
I can stall for three minutes, by the time they get here.
Okay.
They're here.
Eight-nine-twelve Lock and Dam discussion. I'm just funning you, Jeff.
Why you gotta bring me to the line here?
I'm just, I'm just having fun. Life's too short.
What are we talking about here?
Lock and Dam Road. Some kind of the grading of it and what we should be grading, not grading.
Oh, wow.
What do we got?
So what's been going on for a while, so.
Okay.
Trying to get it figured out, so.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How y'all doing? What's going on, bud?
How are you, Jeff?
We pull up on the GIS and see where it's at.
Sure.
So you got an idea. It's not gonna show the fucking lines exact, but. You got it pulled up on yours?
No.
You probably don't know how to get there.
Payback's for hell. Sam.
So we don't put rubber here? No, I mean, you could just say you represent yourself or the Lock and Dam.
You got everybody signed in, land?
Was it eight-one-two? Eight-one-two or nine-one-two?
Eight-nine-one-two.
Eight-nine-one-two.
Yeah, just sign your name and then we'll just do them.
Nine-one-two Lock and Dam.
You guys all represent the Lock and Dam?
I guess while we're signing in, Cotton has to be on the agenda to talk about the road and where we're grading it and there's question as to what we maintain as the county that goes to Lock and Dam. What's a spur? Yeah, so this probably been going on for a little while, so we just need to come up here and sit down and chew on it, figure out what we need to do with it. Because I don't think we're arguing about where your land or your property ends or where the road ends. But we do maintain to the, to the spur so that residents down there can still get in and out, so. Guess, Cotton, where do you want to address on that? That kind of a Reader's Digest version of what we got?
And it seems to be unclear that the land where the spur ends is the beginning of our property, okay? So if we, if we want to address someone that comes there, it doesn't seem to be our right to do that. And since we own it and since we bought that place starting in like nineteen seventy-nine and we have aerial photographs and we've owned that and maintained it and improved it and made it nice and we know that land belongs to us, we would just like to have that left alone. And as far as connecting the spur to the county road, I want you to tell me why you think that's necessary and why what is there now isn't good enough.
As far as maintaining it to the spur?
Right, I mean.
Grading it, regrading it?
Yeah, you, you, you guys grade up, you turn around, put your blade down, you leave. And then Lucas grades from there down the, down the road to the Lock and Dam. And why is there a misunderstanding about whose property is where? And we have made that, that turn, real nice, sweeping, nice turn, and we maintain that. And we have photographs that prove that, that never was like that forty years ago.
No, I don't think it's, we don't think there's any question as to whose land it is. I think it's absolutely your land from everything that I've seen. But we maintain the road, there's a lot of roads we do maintain and the public uses that. We don't own, a lot of gravel roads we don't own.
Okay.
So, Donald Shannon, you can jump in here anytime you want to, I'm gonna throw you to the wolves here.
Okay.
Well, I'll just use my own for, for example. You know, my property line is described to the center line of a scrubber road. I own out there, but it's still a public use. It's still a public road maintained by the statutes of the state of Missouri. And I think that's what we've been trying to do as instructed by you all to, is to maintain these roads. You know, there's a lot of county roads out there that show, if you actually read their descriptions, show that the people actually own the property now. The assessor, I think, has gone in over time and taken out a strip to where you're not actually taxed on that. I know on, on mine, it shows, I think, a thirty-foot strip or sixty-foot, I'm not sure which it is in front of it. But, you know, it's still maintained, there's no dedicated right of way on a lot of these roads out in the county.
But to back that up with what you just said, we have maintained that.
So we.
For forty-one years.
We've maintained down to the, I've been here twenty-five years, Cotton, and we've maintained down to the corner. Now, maybe not as routine as always, you know, but we have maintained down to that corner.
Yeah, you maintain down to the corner.
To the spur, yeah.
And the corner, the spur is here and you all kind of like.
Which one's the spur?
And so have we.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I mean, you're putting a claim on something that we already owned and maintained also.
That may be.
That is true.
By statute though, that we have the thirty-foot easement to be able to maintain it as a public road. There's a statute that states that if there's a public road, the county has thirty feet to be able to maintain that road. It's a permanent easement, you know, they have to go through different steps to vacate it, you know, as far as requesting, you know, the landowners that associate, they can be vacated, yes, as far as a public road. But it has to go through the statutes and the requirements there to be able to do that.
Okay, so, so if you went down there and you backed your machine up and got close to it periodically, even though that's our property and we maintained it, you're saying you can claim it through some.
If county funds, if county's funds are permitted or expended over a five-year period, any five-year period like that, the county has that easement to be able to continue that.
Where did you put funds on it then?
Well, the equipment time, just the grader going in or rock and stuff.
Well, they had to turn around, I mean, they had to turn around somewhere.
There's no limestone on that corner, it's all river rock.
It's where it's.
It's still there.
But funds are still expended by grading it. County funds are still expended by grading it.
What about our funds?
Cotton, I can't argue that.
Right.
I know that you all spent money, but what we're trying to do is keep that road open to get to the people that live down there on the spur.
That is correct.
It's always been.
It would never, ever, in fact, we improved it.
There's never been a restriction on that road.
I've had, I've had, I've had conversations with you particularly about putting a gate up across there. You gonna deny that?
That would. Wait a minute, you gotta let me talk now. There used to be, and that post is still there, there was a cable there, okay? Somewhere in and around two thousand eight to twelve, there was a lot of activity down there. And Pat got upset about it and so Lucas put a gate up there.
That's when that guy drowned.
And so that gate was put up there, but the gate was put up further down. The gate was not there.
All we're, like I said, Cotton, all we're trying to, there's people they pay taxes in the county to that use that road to get to their property.
Which that's no problem. We've never, ever denied any access to the Lock and Dam.
Intimidate all the time, you stand there with your hands like that, you walk towards everyone's car, you stop.
How do you think we're gonna get from the house to the barn?
All the time, give me a break.
Thomas.
Give me a break.
Sir.
I don't want to get into this.
Can I have a chance to speak uninterrupted?
Yeah.
Okay, we live on one side of the road.
Your own branch, right.
And then. And then we have.
Cotton's having a pull right now.
We have our grain, we have the grain bins, our barns and our machinery. When I get up in the morning, I'm gonna come out of the house, I'm gonna walk over to the road and I'm gonna look both ways and I'm gonna cross the road and sometimes I even forget. But we live there, we work there, it's our property. It's not for the convenience of anybody, we make it nice, it's our property and we're not harassing anybody by walking out of the house on our way. That's what I just heard now.
I didn't say it.
We're not here talking about that part, we're here.
Okay, alright, clear that out. Okay, thank you.
I've got this on the GIS.
Okay.
That is your concern about us grading down to here where we were previously.
That's what it looks like today.
Correct.
Okay, now, we have like aerial photographs.
You seen it, Sam?
Mm-hmm. Right? We have aerial photographs and we got them and they're dated. And from way back when, this was an all-eroded bank here. It appears that there's a, a pushout in the river. I got with the core engineers and we have three of them. And what they are is jettas or something to push the water off the bank and stop erosion further down the river. So as you're looking at it today, there used to be a shed there, there used to be a fence right here. There was a fence around this corner, we removed that. And my wife likes that to look nice down there because it's hers. So we made that real nice. But if I need to get an aerial photograph to show you that it didn't look like that.
Well, as far as the river, as far as the river bank, we don't, we don't maintain those.
And has anybody ever stopped anybody from going to the Lock and Dam?
Cotton did.
That was not a public works thing there.
Right.
So, but do you have the problem with us ready to do this?
Right, and the other day, the rotator was going through the knee gate that Lucas put up because Pat requested it.
So the gate's in here?
Yeah, it's been moved down from where this post is, right there, so the gate's further. further down there and we had that land survey and the aerial photograph will show that too, and it showed where our land was actually about eight feet onto theirs and my wife and we discussed it, we said, no, that is the legal description of the property, we're gonna move it over and make it the way it's supposed to be because it's gonna be that way and from then on, and so we, there is nothing that anybody can say that says that we ever denied anybody access there, other than when Pat asked Lucas to put the gate up and then the gate's there.
The gate is clearly on our property, it's not even near the end of the road where Lock and Dam meets Lock and Dam spur.
Exactly.
So why are we talking about it?
Because the rotor gator was going to go down-
So that he'd been maintaining it to the gate and he hasn't been.
I'm sorry?
They maintained it.
We don't want them to maintain it.
We don't want them to maintain it, our road, we want them to do from Lock and Dam to Lock and Dam spur.
But they went down to the new gate, which has passed where it was-
Well, what difference does it make really if they're turning around there? That's what, I mean, I don't understand. The gate has nothing to do with anything.
The reason why we wanna do that is because they, when you come down there and you'll say, this is all ours and it'll be one, like, it'll be like eating your way into us one step at a time because you never did this before, but you're doing it now.
It was just an option, it was something that we just-
We've been there.
Back me up, I mean, I know you grade the road. I know you do a good job. Okay, we're not complaining about any of that, but what we're saying is, if you go down there and you say, all right, we have a thirty-three feet, thirty feet wide, is that what you said?
Mm-hmm.
And it hooks to a thirty-five foot right of way that they already have and you'll say, well, now that's connect, you're gonna say that now, aren't you?
By statute, it is.
Okay.
Cause we've spent public funds, we're not taking the property, we're just, we're just maintaining it for public use to be able to get in and out.
And you're gonna put, you're gonna write that in writing that you will never try to make an attempt to take any more than that? Cause see, you backed your grader over here, next thing you'll say, well, we've been maintaining that, so you're gonna take that, it used to be a shed there.
No.
That's what I'm getting at. Or how much are you gonna take and how long are you gonna?
Cotton, we've, we've never taken anything from you all.
Right.
Okay, I don't know where you're getting this from, that we take property, we've never done that to county.
Well, I'm ensuring that you're not gonna try-
Cotton, I don't have a problem telling you that we'll maintain the road as is for-
How many years have you maintained the road? How many years has the road been?
Well, it's been maintained, as far as I know, I've been there twenty-five, Larry's been there forty.
Have you taken any land from them?
No, we're not taking any land.
Right.
But Mr. Douglas handed us a piece of paper from GIS.
And said that-
And said that-
He had this all drawn off and said that, and I still have it at home and it's all filled out in his handwriting and your surveyor, saying how this and this, and it was drawn so that it would own property all the way up to here and all the way along here and slice that off and I got, and once he gave that to us-
I don't remember saying it.
So, so are you asking us to stop maintaining this or what?
No, I'm-
I'm trying to figure out what, what-
Here's what we're, here's what the thing is, we're asking you to, to explain to us what your intention is there and are you gonna come down later and say, now we own the turnaround and now we own this and this because we backed our grader over there? And we put that turnaround there for your convenience, not for any other reason. And years ago, they can say what they want to, but there's fences on aerial photograph that show that there was fences there and there wasn't room there to turn around. What we're saying is, we've got the property, we own it, we maintain it, we make it better, but you want more access, which is fine, but over time, you can say-
We're not wanting more property.
Yeah.
Cotton, we, I don't know where that-
Are you gonna guarantee us that? Are you gonna leave your job and then the next guy comes along and he's gonna say, well, we've been turning our grader around in there thirty years now, we own that turnaround.
The guy who's replacing me is sitting right there and I don't see that happening.
You don't?
No. Cotton, it's nothing that we've done in twenty-five years I've been here.
Right.
We've not taken any more. Yeah, you created turnaround, we ask that of everybody when we have a dead end where we have to turn around. We ask, most of the time, we construct it.
Right.
We'll go in there and do the work.
Okay.
Okay, you did it on your own, that's, I agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And from the end of the survey corner there, we actually made the turn much nicer. So, Mr. Douglas, when he hands me this paper, I said, Dick, I said, we already gave you seven feet from that to make you a nice, sweeping turn. If you don't believe me, you can go and look. And isn't, isn't us being generous and decent and neighborly like that, isn't that good enough or do we have to go through, you know, more access?
We're not asking for any more than what's being maintained right now.
All right, and then you can look at-
I guess the question is, is why would he ask you to maintain, maintain across, across that property from the counter to the spur?
It's been, it's been a, it's been a public road that we've maintained in the past and we-
It's a dead end road.
Access there.
That gets into a private road.
It's, it's a dead end road that ends before the river.
But there's property that has been used by statutes, you can, if there, it's been in use that way for a period of time and it has since the seventies, like you said, you've owned it that long. That road's been used to access those properties back there.
Since nineteen twenty-eight is when it was deeded in our deed.
Okay. It's been maintained as a public road, okay? We, our responsibility ends where it turns into a private road.
Right.
That's where we're at.
And we're not disagreeing with that now.
Okay.
What I am asking you is, someone comes down and parks right here with a four-wheeler and gets out and they strut around like they own the place instead of just coming down and leaving and my wife addressed him and then the sheriff is standing in her front yard claiming she's harassing people on property that we own.
I can't, I can't discuss-
But it's your sheriff.
So will that change?
It's not my sheriff, I work for the commission. And he's your sheriff too.
I know. But I have a right, I have a right to approach him without the guy walking up and say, this is a felony charge.
If they're on a public maintained road, you don't.
They're not.
We maintain that by, we maintain that road down there to where the spur starts.
I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm saying-
Well, that makes it a public road. By statute, that makes it a public road.
But I just said that the people that were there were up here.
And then that's between, that's between you and them, that's a civil matter, that's not, that's not us.
We're clarifying that.
So, okay, so even though that's our property and you drive over to get greater and if we still go down there and say, hey, what are you people doing down here, come talk to us before you go down there.
If it's on a public road and that meets the definition of public roads, cause public funds have been expended on that on a continuing basis for as long as I can remember, they have the right to be there without coming talking to you.
That's the, that's the catch.
On the public road.
Yes, they, it's like somebody could park out in front of my house on Scrivener Road and I can't say a word about it.
We're agreeing with you that a hundred percent.
Okay, that is a public road because county funds have been expended-
We're not disagreeing with that.
Then what's it-
We're disagreeing with, why are we being, you're calling it a civil thing when we ask people-
If they're on your property-
To state their business.
That's, that's trespassing, that's not us.
Thank you.
If they're on, if they're on the public road, which that section is, because we've spent public funds on it, they have the right to be able to be there.
Right, I never disagree with that.
Okay, but you're saying down there, Cotton, you're, you're, just say what you're meaning that.
We're saying that-
I think what he's trying to say is, he's taking your ground, county's gonna take your ground because they've laid over-
No, we haven't been-
Well, I mean, we're calling it a public road, but really-
Right.
Yeah.
We're not taking it, it's been there for forty years like that.
Well, I mean, I, I can tell you this, whenever I was younger, I know Dad asked Tom Loggie to go farther and he wouldn't do it. I mean, he sat there and told me, he's like, there ain't no way.
We won't go down to spur.
Well, I mean, even, even down, even down past.
Yeah, we won't go down, they've asked me about maintaining all the way down to the cabins, we won't do it, it's a private road.
But, I mean, even as far as, as far as I remember, and I, and I can show you, I mean-
I'm not disagreeing with you.
I'd like to show you, I'd like to talk to you and show you where, you can see clearly where the limestone ends from the county road and where we put it on, on our road and there hadn't been a blade over that Red River Rock, I mean, cause it's still sitting there.
Post right around here and right around here to keep the grader from going outside past that ever again, then that would settle.
Yes.
So, but you don't want them there if you're gonna-
We don't want them there.
Well, we maintain, when we blade the road to lock-
They're gonna stay on this graded part.
But it, that was the case.
And the width is gonna stay thirty feet, we're not contesting that one bit.
If we put, I can't see where Jeff's going, if we put the posts up there, will you install them? Okay, and then if somebody's outside those posts, then you have a civil matter of trespassing that you can go after if they're outside the posts. But you can't claim, you know, it's, you get into he said, she said, okay, if there's posts, something that delineates that thirty feet that we're maintaining.
Mm-hmm.
Then if someone comes down there and is outside of, you can take a picture and give it to the sheriff's department and they can do something about it, that's trespassing.
Sheriff's here too, so we can throw him to-
Am I correct, John?
I've only heard half the conversation, I'm literally agreeing with whatever you say, but I'm gonna say-
It's all your fault, John.
That is correct.
Well, here's, here's the thing about that, I'll, I'll show you someday now, now that we're gonna, I'll show you where there was an old wooden fence and now I know why they put the fence there, probably, they had a fence around there-
Yeah.
And then they had a fence over here and there was hardly enough room to do all that, cause there's a shed right there and, and there was hardly enough room to do anything and this entire bank was eroded out, we have pictures of that in nineteen eighty-three, okay? So, follow me with, so, all right, so the reason why we took all that out of there was to make it so it was a nice, sweeping turn and every, and there was a fence here full of trees and trash that belonged to the spur down there and after the, after the survey, we actually took all that and cleaned it up and gave their property a nice, clear look, so when they came out of there and went on to the county road, there was nothing that could interfere with our sight distance, okay? Because we know that we're working here and we have equipment here and they can see as far as they need to see, as long as they're driving at a speed that they can control. And if I need to get out of my house and go over there in the morning and do business and get ready to work ground or whatever it is that Lucas is gonna do or we're gonna do or have been doing for the last forty-one years, documented, we never had a problem and there was fences there before.
Okay.
But now it's a problem and it's a wide-open sweep and you can see for three hundred feet and now it's, now it's a problem.
What I'm saying again, we can put that fence back if that's what you so desire.
We don't really want the fence because we'd rather have people see what they're doing.
The problem is, and I'm not, I don't know what transpired in past, there's, there's been accusations that you've intimidated people out there.
Right.
Okay, I don't know, I don't-
Can I say something?
I intimidate my tractor when I get on it.
Cotton, what I'm saying is, that way you would have a defined roadway that people have to stay in. Now, they can stand right there inside that road because it's-
Exactly.
But-
And you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna have us there and draw it out before you do it, not just put it where you wanna put it.
No, and that, Cotton, we've never done that with you.
No.
I don't know why you're making it sound like we're the bad guys, we've been over backwards-
No, I didn't say you were the bad guy.
We've been over backwards to do everything that you've wanted down there.
Right.
Okay, now, you're dragging us into a middle of a problem that you're having with your neighbors.
Right.
That's all you're doing. Okay, you're making us look like we're the bad guys, we're trying to do our jobs, maintain a public road down to a private road.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's all we're trying to do.
Yep, and all we're trying to do is live, you go ahead, Kirk, you wanna say something?
Okay, Lucas, our son, is half owner of the Lock and Dam and he maintains the road and he goes up to where our property starts and maintains the road. So that's why we don't understand why you have to go over our property to-
We're not going over your property, we're maintaining the public road that we've always maintained.
Which is our property.
Just as well, just as well as in front of my house.
Right.
My property description finds it to the center line of Scrivener Road, okay? People come and they're using that, my property-
Right.
Out there in front of my house, it's no different what you're talking about right there.
Well, there is a difference because there's a river there and people think they can sit there, which is-
I don't know about river rights, I'm not gonna argue it.
I don't, I just wanna make a point, that people think they could come down and sit there just because it is, they say it's a public road, but actually, they're sitting on our property, so that's the reason.
And we weren't good enough to just be nice about it, now it's become an issue because we're harassing people and actually all we're doing.
And we, there's friends of ours that, if they call us and say, hey, can we put a boat in, we let them put a boat in. They call us and ask us if they can come down and go fishing.
As far as access to the river, I don't know, I'm not arguing that.
Yeah, I think our question today was actually, what we need to do so that you all know-
Right.
Cause I, my main thing was, I told you, you said, well, I'm up here, I'm not gonna ever condemn that land and take it from you, I'm not here for that.
Right.
But we do have to maintain the public roadway to Lock and Dam.
And I agree with that, cause we do that.
So, if we get a defined area, you all are comfortable with that, we're comfortable with it for our road grader, that's all we need to do. Other stuff is all civil or criminal, so.
Okay.
Well, for almost two, maybe three years, they did come down and they pulled up and backed in that turnaround spot and went up the road. Then all of a sudden, the last three times, they wanted to go all the way down to that gate.
And Lucas graded the road the other day and-
All of a sudden, here they come.
Here come the grader the next day to make sure that it's left-hand, right-hand, so a good thing for us to be doing is sitting here and talking about this and then you'll, the thirty feet, if you come down there and you stake and mark that out, since that's the only way we can defend ourselves, then we'll mark it out and we'll stake it-
As long, yeah.
And then all the rest, the spur on their property from there down and the rest of the property-
Do you want us to put any fence in there for you?
Nope.
Okay.
Just put marking posts there.
Okay, we're gonna put enough posts that people can see, so that's gonna be several fence posts all the way along there.
And you'll, you'll show us what you're gonna do before you do it.
We'll do that.
Yep.
Maybe put a sign or something.
Reflective something.
Right, here's in the county roadway, technically.
Can I see that where the end of the county road is?
Well, actually, it's, Jeff, it goes right there.
There's a sign, there's a sign up, it says county road maintenance ends.
Yeah, up there.
About right here.
Maintenance does go to your houses.
Yeah, no, Cotton put up a sign that says it ends right here.
No, we did, we did-
The county did.
The county put up this-
And then who put up our no trespassing sign?
I asked him- Your trespassing sign is on the sign post next to it?
No, it's on the sign.
Okay.
Yeah, and the sheet...
I was down there when the...
Right now, there's a sign there, so there's a sign that ends right there, right?
Yeah, and these lines are very exact, but then because of the distortion, I don't know.
The one thing that I would want to make sure, just so we know, is once these posts are in, we can be notified so we know where they are, and if our children park on our property and stay on the road to look at the river, are they going to be harassed? That's our question, that is our question.
Pat, they were not on your property, they were on our property.
I'm asking, once the posts are put up...
Then you got your, you got...
Once the posts are put up, we need to know.
And your son.
Yes.
And your grandson. And they didn't harass them, she asked them what they were doing, Tommy.
I said, hey, I said, y'all gonna be...
All three of you came up to them.
And surrounded them for half an hour.
That's a whole different issue.
That doesn't have anything to do with it.
Okay.
It's a whole different issue than what we got going on here.
The sign...
We're trying to get our part taken.
Yeah, listen, yeah, we can't, we can't, if, if we come and, and, are we good?
Yeah, and if, the sign that she's referring to on the sign post, it said county maintenance here, my wife said, hey, that sign that's on that bent over post there, can we put that on, or he said, that's a good place to put it, and he said, put it on...
The county, I, I talked to the county...
Okay. The guy that installed it told her it's...
The county installed the county road maintenance ends here, okay?
And the no trespassing sign.
And I, there was a no trespassing sign there, and I said, can we put that there?
Yes, sir.
And he said that would be fine.
We're gonna put fence posts on here.
I did not just do it on my own path.
Okay, well...
We just, for our point, we just want to make sure that our children are safe.
Yeah.
Because right now, everyone on the gravel road, and I could bring every neighbor on the gravel road, is afraid to let their children under our house, because of the conflict of the harassment and the intimidation they do, they made a little delay, it was nine years old, they tried to walk to our house...
You told us we only had thirty feet, we can't make a turnaround unless you give us permission.
It was Dylan Brennicky, and was told he couldn't, Cotton was told he was trespassing, he had to turn around.
For the bus.
He has stopped Eric Brennemacher, and would unear him, this has been going on for years, we don't want to be able to...
Yeah, but that's not, I don't, I don't know if there's anything we can do about that, I mean, neighbors...
But if we know the parameters, and what we have to do, then we're great, we really appreciate the county...
That'd be good, you go down, or you send your people down, they draw it out, we're gonna make it big enough so you can turn...
That's a shame, everybody needs to try to get together, have a barbecue, we'll all come down, Tom, we, we, let's do a barbecue, and once a year, we'll have a barbecue down there, and, yeah, we volunteer you.
That's what we care about, is that we know the parameters, and we know our children are safe, and how they can get down.
We're not, we're not in this, we're not one side or the other, Cotton, but we'll maintain it, we'll put in, we'll come in and put fence posts on here, if you want us to maintain that turnaround, we'll maintain it.
Well, we want to, we got a scum bus, trash truck, we...
Yeah, I mean, there's...
Just wherever, we do that on every dead end, we'll put in a turnaround, we gotta have your permission.
Right, and you can do that, and you can take my board up here, we'll take care of the road, we're not turning radius.
I don't wanna do it down there, I wanna stay away from that.
Hey, Larry, can you, Cotton, can we, I think, we, we're getting this all worked out, because we've got three closed sessions here we gotta go into, can you all, can you all work this out?
We've, we've got a plan and...
And then we're gonna have a barbecue once a year, and we're gonna come to it, and I'll even bring some bourbon, and we're all gonna get along better with everybody.
Okay.
And Tommy's cooking, we know.
Yeah, Tom's cooking.
Commissioner Gelscher, since my name was mentioned, I'd like to respond briefly.
Turnaround, we're not contesting turnaround, I'm just saying, if we give you that, then somebody else will go and say, oh, this is...
Information that I gave you, and the improvements to the Lock and Dam Road and spur were made, and we appreciate it, it was a wonderful improvement, but it was made mainly to improve the drainage to Cotton's land, where he put a drain pipe under our road without our knowledge, our permission.
Lucas?
However, we appreciated it as well done.
I gotta, I gotta answer your question, Dick. Sir, can I, can I speak?
Okay, yeah, this is Pete, the last, now we're gonna have, we're gonna have to move on.
Mr. Douglas, when that pipe was put in there, the old pipe that was in there before that is still in there because I asked the guy not to take it out, and the water ran